All right, I'm ready to go.
Okay, welcome to the May 2nd, 2023 Angels Camp City Council meeting. Rose, roll call, please.
Mayor Herndon.
Present.
Vice Mayor Moncada.
Present.
Councilmember Tisornia.
Present.
Councilmember Borolio.
Present.
Councilmember Scherrato.
Present.
Staff is present.
Okay. Your allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So our report out of closed session on item A is the direction was given to staff. And that will take us to recognition and acknowledgements. We would like to consider a proclamation recognizing May 7th through the 13th, 2023 as National Tourism Week. And do you have any?
It's going to have a fair, it's type of one, they have a.
I got it, I got it.
It has number four on the top.
So Michelle, do you have anything you want to say on this, or?
Yeah, so we have the mayor coming up, and so that's fits right in with making the week before National Tourism Week. But we, you know, our city is the crossroads for a lot that goes on throughout our whole county. And one of the points that I, that was in the press release was that over 740,000 visitors came to the Frogville Plaza in the last 12 months. And so you think about the opportunity we have for our restaurants and our shops and those people passing through even if we get gas. And so one of the pieces that we just recently put on our website is we're re, well, it's been active, but we're doing a promotion for Mother's Day and graduations with the Hop and Shop products. So still the same promotion, but we're going to reset so that if you purchased in the past, you can purchase that card again.
That was my question.
Yeah, exactly.
Good idea.
For everybody immediately. So there's a new Mother's Day promotion on the city's website. And so that goes along with our tourism.
So it's going to still be five, one, get one half?
Five, one, get one half. So twenty-five, you're ten.
But you bought before you even bought one.
Fifty, you get twenty-five, and a hundred, you don't get fifty. Nice graduation gifts.
Does the city want to add any more money to that?
There are same common, they've got about 16,000 left.
Oh, okay.
So there's still many.
Perfect.
Go ahead and put that down.
Awesome. So before I read the proclamation, anybody have any questions or comments? About any members of the public? Anyone want to say anything about this? Do we have anyone online with this, Ruth?
No.
Okay, well, I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation recognizing May 7th through the 13th of 2023 as National Tourism Week. Whereas, May 7th through the 13th, 2023 marks the 40th anniversary, and travel to and within the United States provides significant economic benefits for the nation. And whereas, the travel industry ranks as the fifth largest employer in the U.S. among the top 10 industries of 49 states, including the District of Columbia, when measured by employment. And whereas, the multi-billion dollar travel industry in California is a vital part of the state and local economies. And whereas, travel to Angels Camp and Calaveras County is a multi-billion dollar growth industry that supports the well-being of residents and local communities through employment, a diversified economy, improved infrastructure, and historic preservation. And whereas, travel to Calaveras County generates over 216 million in travel spending annually. Whereas, travel in Calaveras County employs 2,400 people, equal to 11% of the county's entire workforce. Whereas, travel contributes to personal growth, health, professional advancement, education, cultural understanding, and the enhancement of America's image around the world. And now therefore be of resolve that the City Council of Angels Camp does hereby declare May 7th through the 13th, 2023 as National Tourism Week, and recognizes tourism as a key industry essential to Angels Camp economic growth and vitality. That's it?
Yes.
Who we, are we going to host this at the visitor's center? Where are we going to put the actual?
Um, we could.
Where are we going to put it? Put it on social media?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll have it printed up super nice. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
We don't need to do a, we don't need to do a roll call on that, we're just doing it. Thank you. Okay, item number five, we'd be looking for approval of the agenda as posted. And I actually do have an amendment if we notice.
Five thirty?
But yeah, five thirty, the very first should have said, should have said.
Close session.
Close session instead of regular. So we already came out of closed session. And other than that, I don't have any other changes. Does anybody have any amendments to the agenda? Any members of the public? Okay, so I'd be looking for a motion to amend, or to approve the agenda as amended.
I will approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second. Caroline, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Houses on a five. Item number six, public comment. The public may address the council on any item of public interest not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to the city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers will be limited to five minutes per person. Do we have anybody who would like to speak from public comment? Okay, great.
I had some public comment, that's the reason I came to the meeting.
Perfect. So if you want to introduce yourself when you get up to the podium so we know who to put down.
My name is Janet Bailey. I live up on Fairview Drive. I've been, I haven't been to a city council meeting for a long time. I used to be there over 20 years ago. I didn't miss any when I was working as a newspaper reporter. Anyway, I, I noticed the other day that this sign that had been missing on the corner of Bush Street and Mark Twain Road, it was missing. And it's been replaced with a sign that says Fairview Drive. And I'm wondering why and how the name of the street was changed.
Okay, so Bush and Mark Twain sign came down, and now it says Fairview.
Fairview Drive because I've lived up on top of the hill for a long time. And I'd always told people to find my house, you go down Bush Street, make a right turn on Mark Twain Road, and then just keep going to the top of the hill.
Okay.
Because what I understand is that Fairview Drive dead ends on both ends of Mark Twain Road. And it was put in after, when the houses were built up on the top of the hill. And so now it says Fairview Drive cleared out on Bush Street.
Right.
When the sign was replaced.
Okay.
And I, it's been kind of confusing for people because I've seen at one time AAA map showing that it went clear down there. But I've had other experiences. One day I was out walking, this is quite a few years ago, with a friend. We were walking around the block from Mark, Fairview down Mark Twain Road, and a car pulled up, I think it was a police officer, looking for a street address on Mark Twain Road. And it was a higher number than the houses where it ended there. And I realized later that there is one house on that, one block between Mark Twain, where Fairview comes into Mark Twain Road and goes on down to Bush Street. So that house must, it has a Mark Twain Road address. And now you've changed the name of the street by the house.
Right. Well, we don't have any answers for you tonight.
No, you know, we're expecting.
But let's make sure that we get your contact information.
But I just thought, instead of just calling City Hall, I come to the council meeting.
Right. So what we'll do is let the staff member reach out to you. And I'm sure somebody from Public Works can get that answer for you.
Okay, because it should be Mark Twain Road as far as I, as far as I know.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Janet.
Okay, any other members of the public? And still nobody online?
No.
Okay, we'll close public comment. Moving on to item seven is consent agenda. We have one item, item A, which is the draft minutes from our April 18th meeting. Does anybody have any questions or comments or reason to pull that?
Give me a call, no.
Any members of the public have any comments about our consent agenda?
It should be Mark Twain Road.
Okay.
Other people have been wrong.
Okay, seeing none, I'd be looking for a motion on item seven, A.
Same motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi, hello, Ruth.
So it takes us to item eight, A, which is the first reading of ordinance 528, amending Chapter 1612, changing the expiration dates and extension timelines for tentative maps in accordance with the State Subdivision Map Act.
Mayor and council members, this is being done because when we had to grant an extension for Habitat for Humanities, a subdivision map, we discovered that we were out of date with the State Subdivision Map Act. You can do a two-year extension, and then you don't have to then do it one year in a one year. You can do two years, two years, and you can even go beyond that under certain circumstances. So we've asked to amend the code to reflect that so that somebody doesn't just simply look at the code and think you're done. Also, there is one change that we're proposing, it's a typo. Section 1612100 of the proposed code says, "The planning commission may extend its approval of an active tentative map for an additional 24 months if an extension is required in writing." That's supposed to be requested in writing. So we just asked for that change. And I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, so at this time, we'll open the public hearing. We can receive any public comment on this matter. And if there's no public comment, we will close the public hearing. And then we'll be bringing this back at a future date.
May 16th?
May 16th is the new date. All right, thank you, Amy. Takes us to item eight, B, which is the first reading for ordinance 529, adding Chapter 1705 Sequoia Guidelines to the City of Angels Municipal Code, AMC, and Resolution 2342, adopting the City of Angels Sequoia Guidelines and Environmental Review Procedures. Amy.
Mayor and council members, this is, one, required by state law. Two, if you don't, the penalty is pretty much nothing. However, three, it does provide transparency to the public. And recently, I've had the experience where the planning director made one sequoia determination, and the attorney made a different sequoia determination, and they did not have sequoia guidelines. So nobody knew whose determination carried the day, or whose could be appealed, or how it could be appealed. So by adopting guidelines, that takes that problem away. These are the state sequoia guidelines. What your local guidelines do is basically takes the applicable sections of all of this that applies to you most regularly and puts them all in one place. So if somebody came in tomorrow and they didn't know how to do sequoia, and they read through this, they would probably be able to get themselves through the environmental review process for a project. It also names certain things that you may overlook because you're not going to look through this entire thing. So if you have a Public Works project, and perhaps you have a mile's worth of pipeline, or one mile's, one mile worth of pipeline, and you think you need to do a very long drawn-out environmental review, you don't. There are some exemptions. There are some exemptions that we use a lot, and those are also listed in here, as well as establishing whose responsibility it is to make sequoia determinations and how it can be appealed. Tonight, you'll be introducing the ordinance, which would incorporate these guidelines. However, your second is to actually adopt a resolution to adopt these guidelines tonight, not just a first reading. These can be changed by resolution, they do not have to be changed by ordinance. They aren't fact guidelines, they don't really carry the force of law, except that they do help you if you decide that one of your parades is a special event, and those are automatically exempt from sequoia. It's helpful to have that written down somewhere and locked in. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have one question on the categoric conditions. What is the cubic yards of dirt for grading grounds?
We are currently, thank you for catching that we have a blank in there. We're currently doing all.
Well, it was highlighted.
All hazards.
I felt like he was forming.
All hazards planning codes. That was one of the things we're going to establish. So we'll be able to fill in that blank hopefully within the next two to three months. So right now, it's blank.
Okay. I thought this was very helpful.
Yeah.
I like the way it's written out. Okay, so we're going to move forward with the first reading on this, but then you actually want to adopt the resolution for the procedures.
Correct.
The actual, okay. So we'll do it in two, we'll break it apart. We will first introduce and waive the first reading for the ordinance 521, adding Chapter 1705. Looking for questions or comments from anybody up here? So we will open public comment and listen for any, oh, I'm sorry, open the public hearing and listen for the public comment at this time? Nobody joining us? Okay, so we will close public comment at this time and close the public hearing. We'll be bringing this one back on May 16th. So then the second recommendation would be any questions or comments on the resolution for the procedures, the guidelines and environmental procedures. Can you public comment on that before we move forward with the resolution? No public comment? I'd be looking for a motion for adoption of 2342.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Houses on a five-oh. Takes us to item eight, C. This is the first reading for ordinance 530, amending Chapter 17.42, which is the special planning to establish permitted use in that zone.
Mayor and council members, in doing our county citywide rezoning, we were talking to lots of individual property owners, especially the largest property owners that have the most acreage. Most of them are opting to go with special planning for their zoning district. And they ask that between the time they do a big master plan for all their acreage, maybe we want to do a residence, maybe we want to allow our cattle to still graze, or there's an existing building that we want to continue using until that's adopted. So in response to that request, we are proposing to add permitted uses to the special planning district. We have one addition that has come in the most recent meetings we've had. Right now, we have single-family residents, small animal keeping, large animal keeping, ongoing or new uses of existing buildings. And we would like to add E, accessory uses and structures pertinent to permitted uses. In other words, if I have cattle grazing, and I own a barn for my cattle, I would be allowed to do that. And that's all that I have. You happy to answer any questions?
Okay. And this is above 20 acres?
Actually, above 20 acres, you do a master plan, a specific plan. Under 20 acres, we add the SP combined district. So far, we haven't had anybody with less than 20 acres who actually opted into this. They usually have a collection of parcels that together total more than 20 acres.
I have a question. And if they don't opt in for this, they can still stay the way they are. They will have to pay, right now, right, right now, we have funding to change this.
Yes.
And it doesn't mean they can't do it later.
Correct.
It's just they would have to come forward with that one.
Correct. They have until May 19th to do their final decision. But I think most of the SP people have jumped in and said they want.
Yeah, how many SP people are there?
There are probably seven, but it probably encompasses the most acreage in the street.
Any questions? Okay, so we will open the public hearing at this time. Any members of the public have any comments on this? Seeing no public comment, we will close the public hearing. And this will also come back on May 16th. Amy, what are you doing on May 16th? All right, going to item eight, D. This is the first reading for ordinance 531, amending Chapter 17.85 for the planning commission procedures relative to agenda content.
Mayor and council members, the planning commission is recommending approval of these changes after reviewing them. There's two reasons for this. One, it's sort of crazy to say exactly what your agenda is going to say precisely within an ordinance because sometimes you may want to change that up. And if your ordinance says thou shalt include this, it's sort of tough to not include that particular thing. Also, we're trying to emphasize the fact that the planning commission takes direction from the council as opposed to the other way around. And the way that some of our agenda items were worded sort of implied the other way around. And this will help us, in fact, emphasize those things that are in your strategic plan that are priorities a little bit easier. So that's basically all there is to this, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ready for questions? So item seven on the agenda would still be planning commission business. It would just be for action items only. And in the past?
It was a very wide discussion.
Okay.
And so we're trying to, if we want to talk about stuff like that and shoot the breeze, we'll do that app.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's mainly action. All right, anybody have any other questions? Okay, we will open the public hearing at this time. Any public comment? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and bring that one back on the same date we can pull that. Moving on to item eight, E. And this is to approve Resolution 2344, authorizing the purchase of APN 060006009, and authorizing the city administrator to sign, authorize, and have recorded all relevant documents and agreements. Amy.
Mayor and council members, as you know, our closed sessions, we did make an offer and did agree to a price with the landowner to purchase the Napa Auto Parts property for $250,000. And with approval of this item, we will proceed with getting escrow opened, closed, and closing that purchase. Happy to answer any questions? We did get our completed Phase One telling us that there were no hazards that they anticipated on the property.
Is your question?
No, I'm excited.
I'm excited.
I think it's great, I think it'll be, I think there's a lot of stuff we can do with this property down there right next to the park. So I'm excited.
What's going to be our escrow time? I see I'm moving out already.
It's going to be a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Only because of the applicant schedule.
Okay.
Pretty quick.
Girl, did you have a question?
I was just wondering when that building was built.
Ooh.
1962.
They, the Phase One actually went into great detail about that. There used to be two buildings on that parcel, believe it or not. There was a little residence, a small room kind of residence on there. And then at some point, oh, gosh, I will say the 50s or something, it started showing up as being an auto retail of some form or another, or repair.
Okay. Looking for public comment on this. Does anybody have any comments that are here with us in the public? No? Nobody online? We're still waiting for any to join, aren't we?
Yeah.
Okay, so bringing this one back, I'd be looking for a motion for Resolution 2344.
I will make a motion for 2344.
I will second, if that's okay. Sorry, girl.
That's you.
She needs to be at one. I gotta get one in every moment. Even a squirrel catches a net, what is it? Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Houses on a five-oh. Moving right along, item number nine is administration report. And of course, those of you who see that Rebecca is not with us tonight, she has the week off, so Michelle.
So last week, a team from FEMA was out in our office. They met with Chris Sillipin, and he took them around the city to show the damage from the storm. They took pictures, did their reports, and so I think still moving forward with all of that. And that reported, and hopefully we've heard seeing somebody coming in from all the storm damage. So that was the activity busy towards the end of the week in the office. And you can also see we have a new sign put up here and shared our new vision statement. And then wanted to record a few things on the creeks. There's a joint press release coming out from Utica, Angels Camp, UPUD, Murphy's Park in Calaveras, that there's caution urged with cold water and high flows from the Murphy's Creek. So they want people to take caution when they're around the streams because not only is the water extremely cold, there's going to be currents sending rushing waters through there. So it's not so safe to swim or take in.
I have a question on that. Can that come out in Spanish as well?
We can ask.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
I think that would be important.
Yeah, definitely. And this is going to go on our website?
Correct.
Once the others give the okay, we've already given the okay with the format. We're just waiting for the others, and then Joel will resend it, and we'll start pushing the message out.
So we're done. Yeah. And then our creek is still closed. We have a message on our website about the state water quality control board conducted testing on April 21st, and fishing's not recommended, and it's closed for swimming. And to continue to check our website for updates.
On the fishing game website, it does say that it's open. I don't know if they changed that. But it shows up stalking it, and that there's going to be.
Rebecca has had complaints. Yeah, yeah. We, that was all last week.
Yeah.
We did.
It was last week. And my husband's like, it says it's open.
Yeah, she was on the phone, and yeah, she took care of it.
And they actually had told her that they have tried to put every kind of alert out, and it's still showing up on different.
Correct.
It's crossing, yeah. Why is it crossing?
Yes.
And then last meeting, we had Angels Creek Trail, Dewberry was out here. And so the documents are now applied. They're on our website, and you can also find them at the state website. They're going to be available at the library. And they're requesting comments from the community by June 5th. So you can get feedback and information.
On your input.
That's it.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on to item number 10 would be our council report. Gretel, you got anything to report on?
Just what company is stating that power rates are going up due July. Good surprise.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I went to his screen here.
I'm supposed to report this. You went to the Sullivan Task Force for me, thank you. I went to Whiskerino, and then this Thursday, I've got a museum meeting, a foundation meeting.
Perfect. Is that? I attended Whiskerino, I'll be attending LaFco, which is in two weeks, two weeks from yesterday. And then tomorrow, I'll be at the fair kickoff dinner.
Oh, yeah, I'll be there too.
And we don't have Cog this week, so.
Right, Cog is, yeah.
Arcadia as well.
Yeah.
How about?
May 4th, the Ironstone, at 6:00 PM is the water is our.
Yep. What is that again, on Thursday? Thursday is Friday, right?
Six o'clock. I talked to Joel this afternoon, there's 200 people that have already answered.
Great, nice.
I will not be attending, though I have other things that I'm doing. And then we had Utica, we went over the grants program, draft budget. We have the draft committee going right now so we can get our budget to the city before time is due. What else? We did a 10-year CIP improvement. Oh, congressionally, we're kind of going after some bigger money, some earmarked money and different things. And that's looking positive at this point, we'll see. We'll see. What else? Recovery efforts, dealing with FEMA and all that good stuff. Dam safety, we passed. We did good on the dam safety, so all of our dams are fine. And that's all I had notes-wise on Utica.
Okay. I did attend the Solibase Talk Course for Caroline. It was a quite, it was a quick meeting. Basically, they were talking about the comprehensive review and rate study, I'm sorry, and E study that was completed by a consultant, and that was being taken to the board for recommendations to move forward that next day, which of course happened. Operationally, they, IWM is fully staffed. They've done some little improvements. Dust mitigation is a thing, and then completed adding steel plates to this protection wall for cleanup. So those are both in progress and/or completed. And then the phase three was the cell three, is that what they call it, cell three? They began that on April 4 with Ford construction. Ford mobilized, and they're starting to work on leaching issues and decommissioning of the old one, I guess.
Yeah.
And then UWCA was the other thing I attended, and everything that Alvin said, dam safety. The earmarks is huge. It looks like there's a pretty good chance we're going to get that Padilla one for $262,000.
There it is, and then we're after $6 million.
And then another one from Feinstein, so yeah, he's, he's finding stuff out there, that's for sure.
Yeah.
I did attend Iscarino. Of course, fair is coming, and Friends Affair is very active right now. If anybody wants to get involved in volunteering, there's always something to do. We do have the mixer tomorrow, no, there's a chamber mixer. Tomorrow's the kickoff, but the chamber mixer for the fair is on the 11th, May 11th, out at the fairgrounds at the ranch house at 5:30, maybe 6 o'clock, I can't remember the time. But it is well-attended. It's the final kickoff before fair. And it's a good idea to get an idea, it's a good time to get an idea of what's going on in the calendar, and things that are changing for a fair every year. So that's coming up. And I guess Cinco de Mayo is the Friday, and I'm big on that, because I love. That's all I got. Anybody else?
I went to the Aqua Mixer on Wednesday. And I attended that. This TLM dinner. We went to that.
Yeah, we attended that. That was, that was good.
So two other reasons.
It's a busy month.
It's a busy month.
Busy times.
The Aqua Mixer at Calaveras was well-attended, and they've done a lot outside.
They're getting sporting goods, they have a whole fishing department.
Yeah.
Yeah. They're getting their minnows pretty soon, live bait.
I saw that in the.
Without glory ball.
Yeah, I know.
So. Okay, calendar ready.
Calendar, so you mentioned that cog is canceled tomorrow. Caroline mentioned the museum for Thursday. Water is gold on Thursday at 6:00 PM at the Ironstone. All hazards on Tuesday, the 9th, for Gretel. The planning commission meeting was scheduled for May 11th has been canceled, but Amy is still hosting the open house from 4 to 6 regarding the rezoning, if there's any questions still pending out because of that. Lavco on the 15th, IRWMA on the 17th, which is Rebecca and Chris. Rob Jump starts on the 17th through the weekend. Central Sierra Economic Development is on the 18th. And then the Angels Camp Firefighter Association is doing their pancake breakfast on the 20th and 21st, so.
Lots going on.
Yep.
It's the last event.
When is Junior Frog Day?
13.
13.
Okay.
And when's Kid Day at the fair? Thursday is Kid Day?
Thursday at 12 o'clock.
Kids' machine for free.
Since you were kids. It's like always.
I think Thursday's always.
It's always Thursday.
Well, you'll be busy downtown, then. I do need to report, I forgot one other thing. I did attend the Lavco banquet, Cow Lavco banquet at Ironstone on the 26th, where I spoke on behalf of the city. There was about 100.
Oh, how was that?
It was good. It was well-attended. People love it. They haven't had a Cow Lavco get together in, I think, COVID, in a few years. So they love the area. They were from everywhere, foreign life. Yeah, well-attended. That's it.
I will not be here next meeting.
Alvin is.
New, I'm calm, thank you.
Moving on to correspondence, we have the item that Gretel spoke to about power rates projected to increase by 10% beginning July. So that's a hot topic.
Or dependent on.
And then item 13, future agenda items. We have Alvin not going to be here next meeting. Anybody have any agenda item requests, I guess, is how this works?
Yeah, Amy.
Okay. I'd be looking for a motion for item 14, a German.
Motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah. I would change it up. Been the one down.
Next 36. Very good.
Thank you. Next.